Good evening, this is a work session for the board trustees of town of Buena Vista. The date is July 9th, 2024 at 6 o'clock. And our first presenters are from the airport, Jack Wiles and Chandra. Take it away, Jack.
Good evening, thank you mayor, trustees, staff. So I'd like to thank you very much for allowing us to talk about the airport because we just love talking about the airport. Speaker of the Board, I'm Jack Wiles, I'm the airport manager. Tonight joining me is Chandra, she's our airport operations supervisor. And down here we have pilot extraordinaire Dan Court, right? He's the airport advisory board chair and he'll have a presentation as well. Next slide. Yeah, so here's our agenda, visions and goals. I'm not going to go into great detail because that'll come up again and again, especially during the budget. So whatever, I'll show it so you can see what our agreements and goals are and the airport staff. So halfway through the presentation, I'll hand over to Chandra, which is the airport operations review, our revenue review today. And then Dan will close us over. So here's our vision, if you're in a moment to have a look at that. The big thing is we want to try and be an economic engine for the county and the town. And to do that, you know, you know, long-term goals, maybe be a hub, transportation hub, and also be well embedded and support emergency operations, just like we did for the fire that we said, Lincoln fires. A little bit about our airport. We sit on 184 acres of land, nine buildings, 30 hangars, which are all fully occupied. We have the fourth largest runway in the state and the largest runway in the western mountain region. So that makes a big difference where you'll see the traffic that we get, the jet traffic, and it really helps us. The goals, there's your goals up again, I hope you have a look at that. I'm not going to get in great detail because that will revisit. But the big thing, safety, safety and safety is one of our big things. Training that goes with that, plus maintaining what we have and start building. And I think Chandra will just sort of use this as a bad and deal with Dan. What I'd like to dive into is on the slide, a little bit of the airport history. So we can sort of look back and sort of our roots start about 1920s. There was little airstrips out by what we call rodeo ground now. And from what we read, understand a little bit of barnstorming and stuff going on out there. And then in the 60s, a couple airstrips started migrated over to where we currently reside now. And one of the big things was airstrip to, for the prison system to transport prisoners in and out of the prisons. So that, and that, a little piece of that runway is still, we can still see it today. The 70s is kind of when we really got rolling with the airport. Land, local landowners and business people such as Ron Suther, Jerry Steinhaus started looking at, we need an airport here to, you know, track business or workforce development. Provide a hub, a network for the Arkansas Valley for the rest of the state. So they started developing this airport. And they did get a little runway in, a little dirt strip again. And at that time, it was the Buena Vista Municipal Airport and under the ownership of the Art Valley Aviation. You know, and as we progressed along, it just started growing and growing. And then in the mid 80s is when you see the airport is what we see. That's when it really started looking like what we see today. 85, we've got the hangar, the terminal building started coming up, our fuel system, 1985. 91, the town recognized it and so we had the airport overlay zone district was on the, now on the town plans. 2000, 2005, another jump, an epoch for us. That's when we started getting into testing, you know, search and rescue operations and a number of military operations. So it really started to grow larger and faster. And that's really when we started having to deal with FAA, make sure we follow regulations. So we'd be, you know, becoming a real airport at that point, instead of just a mom and pop operation, which is really unique around 2005. The airport was then transferred to the town of Buena Vista. And that's when we got our name, Central Colorado Regional Airport. And we actually got an airport designator, Kilo Alpha Equituliet. So fly into, you know, all the airports and you fly around, they get those weird little number letters. Ours is Kilo Alpha Equituliet. 2005, we got our weather station, which allowed more traffic to come in, in a little bit less, you know, ideal climate. So that was great. Mel Sellers, who used to be on our advisory board, a weatherman then, he had a lot to do of getting that installed. And he still helps us out today. 2016, Carpenter property and hangar was purchased with FAA funding. 2017, the Grindle property, which is about midfield, purchased with town money. The Carpenter hangar is way in the south, so we just recently moved the fence lines to bring those into the airport property. So to allow us future development. And then 2019, we got Dibble on board. In 2020, we res serviced our air runway, taxiway 23. We just finished the tie-down area, the expansion. Now we're leaning in, leaning well ahead for 25 project of expanding the north apron and across new fuel island and fuel systems. So airport personnel, we have a pretty small staff that has, and you'll see what we do later, has accommodated quite a lot of activity. We only have two full-time people at the airport, myself, airport manager, and Chandra are our ops supervisor. Then we have three part, permanent part-time, they're line technicians. So they all work independently, we never have them all on at once. Any given day at the best, we'll have three people at that airport. Sometimes we bring in, actually we have Bens or very disextremely busy. So what, we have to be cross-trained, everybody, myself down, you know, to do just about everything at that airport. Whether it's fixing light bulbs in the hangar or total fueling, pushing aircraft. Over the last couple of years, we've gotten quite busy, so we hire summer people to come in and help us out as well. So we have somebody comes in, helps, you know, maintenance of the building, cut grass and painting for us. And I think the flow chart was up there just a sec. Yeah, so you can see I report directly to Brian and to yourselves and to trustees. We have an air advisory board. And you see off to the left, I have Dibble, they're part of our family as well. What you don't see is the FAA and CDOT. Our FAA rep is Paula, who is in Denver. And our CDOT aeronautics rep is Caitlin, who is also in Denver. We rely on them heavily for policies at the airport and funding. So they're not on it. And also we have our fuel, AF man, AF fuel is our person, that's David Miller. So here we go. Looking people there. That's not my claim, by the way. So I, I retired out of the military, I was, I was an engineer, army engineers, 30 years. And then I sort of, sort of found my way to Colorado and ended up starting here in 2016 as a line tech. And then sort of transitioned to airport manager in 2018. In 2019, Chandra joined us with a whole bag of experience and knowledge that we lean on. Administration skills, marketing skills, webbing, everything he did. Probably the best decision the town ever made, it sort of helps me out a lot. Excuse me, wasn't really smart. That's her, that is her claim. And then there are line techs. So next, the guy on the far left is a brand new and he's the youngest as well. So it was a real unicorn to find him. When Tad Leary, those that know him, left, we hired Nick. He comes from, he was a line head line tech at the Madison, Mississippi Airport, a general aviation, very similar to ours. So, I mean, it was very little training, hit the ground running. But that's not really why we hired him. We hired him because he drove a Zamboni for the NHL team for the Panthers. You gotta do that, right? So I thought, you drive a Zamboni, you can drive a snowplow. So we had him and then Randy, he retired from, he's one on the far right, retired from the prison system right next door to us. He's also on Air Force back. And then Gavin, one of our last, or the other hire is, he's retired, Air Force officer, 24 years with loads of operation experience. He brings to the table just the, you know, operation and street planning and just a lot of smarts and just common sense calls, you know. We have a pretty strong team that I just absolutely confident, I can lead them just on their own and things get done effectively and safely. So this is the, the A-team. Air advisory board, airport, air advisory board. And so there's seven positions and two alternates, which we, we are, we are full. They meet every third Tuesday. One of the main jobs is, you know, review policies for the airport for ourselves and operation development, facility development, make recommendations, not just to me, but to you folks too, the board of trustees. And a critical role is, you know, serve as the ambassador for the town and our airport. And of course, we have Gina, who's our board trustee liaison. And so it's again, great to have you there. I think we have a really strong board. Dan, who has joined us tonight, he joined the board in 2017 and then took over the chair in 2022. So Dan's a pilot out of Denver with Southwest Airlines and also a retired Air Force pilot, flew C-130s, did lots of operation and skills. So if you need a flight, just go ask. Last member of our team is the Dibble engineering consultant team. They're, they've got offices here in Arizona, but we deal with Jared out of Denver. They've joined us in 2019, we just renewed their contract, so they'll be with us till 2029. And they did the, the project I just mentioned earlier, 20, the apron rehab and also the runway. And we're starting to lean it in. They're already in the design phase for North Apron and Fuel Island construction. So they're a great asset, not just for airport construction, but a lot of questions we have about just things that go on at the airport and infrastructure. And they also help us do, you know, liaison with FAA and CDOT. So these last few slides, it's sort of, I can't, I say, it's just kind of year in the life from what we do at the airport and you sort of just glaze through that. So I mentioned before, there's a line tech and everybody at the airport, this is what we have, our daily, what we do daily. We see fuel, fuel plant, tow, fix things that are broke. So everybody has to do everything, you know. We're very thin on the ground, but at least we have a really good crew. On the, doing our own long ones. But we do get a lot of help from the town and through the public works. They certainly help us when we get ourselves in a jam and we need some heavy lifting. Lean on the public works. Some of our major projects we do is military, deal with the military and helicopter tests. And so HATS is the military high altitude aviation training, they're out of Eagle. And helicopter training. So we've had companies such as Boeing, Bell, Secorski, Leonardo in testing helicopters. In fact, just 22 Augusta just had their aircraft, 139, the Air Force certified that to replace the Huey, which is US, if you look at those old movies in Vietnam, that's the helicopter they flew there. So they just bought that and that was tested at our airport. And here's the HATS barbecue. So we will be doing another one this, this year sometime around mid-August. We haven't quite set the date, but we'll certainly get that out ASAP, but we'll have another one. And we do a number of events, we have the high altitude or flying, which we won't do this year. It's because we've got a lot of other things going on and budget. But there's the automobile car shows, there's a running club coming in the next week or so. And I think in the next couple of weeks, intergovernment dinner. And so there's a lot of things we host at the airport, just, you know, other than just airplanes. Finally here. This is kind of a picture of all our different aircraft that we cater to. Because we have an 83, three foot, 83, 400, 83, 100 foot runway. Get that one out. We were able to accommodate jets like this, not so much in Levalle and Salida. So that definitely helps with FAA funding and puts us on the map. But we, anything and everything that can fly comes into general aviation, it's an open airspace, no control tower, so everything is flying. We kind of got to deal with just a bunch of aircraft. And just before I hand over to Chandra, she's going to do the operations revenue. I'm just going to explain a little bit of difference between FAA and CDOT. FAA and CDOT give us a lot of money for funding for our airport construction and maintaining. Because FAA is a federal organization and they tend to deal with larger projects, runway, land acquisitions, buildings. And they'll fund 90% and then CDOT will fund 5% of that. But they tend to help us out in the equipment side, like snowplows, you know, minor repairs to runways, the, our weather stations. As well, we lean on both of them for policy and, you know, guidance. So FAA is a federal, CDOT is a state. So after that, I'll just hand over to Chandra and she can take it from here.
My next slide. One more. So you can see from this table, some of the main indicators over the past years show that we have about a 15 to 20% increase in jet traffic, total aircraft and ops. They've all increased by 15 to 20%. That big number is the people, there are a lot more people using our airport at a 50% increase. What the table also shows that our heavier 12,500 pound aircraft, that while it appears that it hasn't increased very much, when you temper that stat with the decreases in military and helicopter ops, you'll see that that reflects the majority of our bigger aircraft are now large jets and charters, which mirrors exactly what we see with the increase of business and leisure, travel, destination weddings and recreational tourism. One takeaway from that perhaps, our visitor demographics have evolved. And these visitors, they expect different amenities and services. They're more staff intensive, they have more questions, they seek more details about lodging and transportation infrastructure than our testing and military groups have in the past. And take away number two, like Jack said, we, we have the same number of staff as we did in 2019. I was the last additional hire. And so these types of operational increases demand more of our small staff and our ability to be flexible sometimes when we consider new projects. Like the town, our resources are finite and so our progress has to be more intentional. Next slide please, what is an airport? Yes, we're a small department, but we're a mighty department. We genuinely take pride in what our airport is. We're a gathering place for the public, we're a venue, we're a transport hub for people and goods and services. And we're an economic engine for our community. And as you can see from that list, perhaps even more critically, businesses and government agencies rely on local airports, as staging areas for emergencies and delivery of critical supplies and personnel. Temple, within two and a half hours of the Forest Service declaring interlock and fire notification to the public, we had helicopters on site fueling at our airport. And that same traveling distance took fire teams and vehicles till the next day to reach us. So within two and a half hours, they were on the ground at the airport fueling. So airfields are critical as an insertion and extraction interface to the backcountry that we're surrounded by here. Flight for life calls with patient transfer, search and rescue can stage 24/7 on a moment's notice. We accept cargo transfer flights, packages and medical supplies. And we host meetings and educational tours and we have pilots offering flight instructions and obviously a lot more. Every time we compile our goals and achievements, like all departments. And one of our midterm goals is the pursuit of funding and replacement of our fuel island. And this is why, in a typical year, our fuel cells account for 50% of our revenue and we're self-funded. So that's critical. And you'll see the other half of the pie is town and county matches, our FAA and CDOT grants and other. And what other covers is those other services that we provide, such as hangar rental, office space, things like that, tie-downs. But you see how critical that fuel revenue is for us to be self-funded. And economic impacts, just a brief review of kind of the impact that our smaller airport visitors have on the town. Most of our visitors go into town, some of them stop in fuel, but almost everybody goes into town for lodging, you know, lunch, dinner, crafting. They use the town and the recreational amenities that are here. So we have an assessment algorithm we created to track this, to help quantify our economic value as a resource to the town and also to help us move towards financial self-sufficiency by better projecting that revenue. And how do we, so our goal is how do we maintain our collective economic success? And one of the ways that we do that is offer impeccable customer service. Offer a safe, reliable airfield. And we offer a clean hangar and a terminal facility, which is what visitors are looking for. Number two, we encourage patronage of local businesses and town amenities. We're a visitor information center. People take our advice and we're truly a gateway to the town and.
Just anecdotally, do you have a sense of the ratio for folks who are just here recreationally for fun? How many are here for events or weddings versus outdoor recreation activities?
You mean versus business?
Yeah, like I'm looking at lodging, I'm wondering like as South Main has developed and there are more events here. How many folks are coming for that type of infrastructure opportunity versus like a ding fishing rafting?
A lot, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Weddings have increased, kind of the leisure tourism, we're seeing many people certainly still come for guided things like hunting. But I think that's definitely increased, we're seeing that, absolutely. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Goals and achievements, I think as we, we've had a few weeks to reflect back now on Interlockin. And I think one of our achievements this year will certainly be our support of the wildland fire suppression efforts in Twin Lakes. Our airport's well positioned, both geographically and logistically, in terms of our airfield, our facility amenities and our deep experience with, with helicopters and emergency support efforts. We can quickly and safely stand up these emergencies and search and rescue operations. We've done it in the past and we know how to do it. Couple takeaways from that last slide. The airport staff did support the Interlockin incident safely and with the resources we had. We did what we do well, which is prioritizing the wellbeing of our small staff. And we were adaptable and we utilized reasonable judgment. Number two, there will be a next time. We've had incidents in the past, both emergencies on wildland, and we must consider now how to better prepare for the future incidents that we have. And number three, momentarily Dan will speak to some strategies that the town might employ to increase our emergency ops capabilities. We could have done better with less stress and unpredictability for airport staff, given some direction, training and street planning. So those are some lessons we have. I'd like to leave you on a positive note for reflection. All of us collectively, you, we, we're stewards of an airport and that's a remarkable asset. Whether we signed up for it or not, we all are. And we have a capacity to mature in our department and pursue additional development. However, we need to identify and guide appropriate uses that'll invigorate our continuing success. So I appreciate your time. Any questions? For Dan Hopson and.
I would like to just thank you for the work that you did with the Interlockin Fire. You know, we appreciated all of your details, you know, moment by moment, record of what you were doing.
Thank you.
And I know it might have been nice to have Jack there rather than having him off in Italy, but you know, you did great. Thank you, thank you very much, my pleasure.
May I say, are we done at five, 6:30?
Yeah, hurry Dan.
A minute per slide. Mostly I just really appreciate this opportunity to get some name face with the trustees especially. You're going to find out as we work together as, in the months and years to come, I'm a relationships guy. To the extent that we know each other, we trust each other. When things get tense in a hurry, which is usually what happens in aviation, we'll be able to work together to get the results that we want. So I'm mostly asking for your aid and advocacy. And the reason why that is, is this town is the airport sponsor. That word means something to the FAA. When it's like, who's in charge? Who do we turn to when something's not up to par? Who do we turn to when we need to talk budgeting? The FAA is going to come to the town. That's nebulous. Are they going to come to the mayor? Are they going to come to Brian? Are they going to come to me? Because we haven't definitively said, the answer is all of us. And when all of us are responsible, nobody's responsible, right? It's real easy to point the finger and say, well, the board didn't do that. And what I definitely don't want to do is ever have anybody look at Jack and Chandra because they've built an amazing team to operate the airport. I'm talking about where are we going? How do we work with the FAA and the state to get the airport to support our goals? To be the tool that it can be to meet the broader community goals? And that's why it's so important for me to talk to you tonight. So next slide, I'm going to let you know where I'm steering the board because I've made it kind of an activist board. It's not coffee and donuts every third Tuesday of the month anymore. We're taking the lead and setting a strategic direction that will bring to you all periodically to say, you're tracking or Dan, you're way out in left field, come over here and look at this, this is where we need you to go. But just like Jack said, first and foremost, safety, all right? Chandra told you heavy turbine aircraft are starting to come here. They're our biggest revenue source, they're buying the most fuel. But their exposure to underlying risks is much greater than a single-engine piston-driven Cessna. If we don't maintain a safe operating environment and sell them quality fuel, if we suffer a mishap on our airport, that's going to have negative impacts that ripple far out into the future and counteract all the other efforts we're putting in. Safety is first. What we're doing is the airport board is taking all the great things that Jack and his team have already done over the years and we're putting it into a safety management system where we have documentation and we can show follow-up and results to people that bring concerns. I need you all to know that we're creating what we call a reporting culture. What that means is when somebody sees a threat or a hazard, they know exactly that they're empowered to bring it up. They know who to tell and we all know that we're going to follow up on it. And you're all part of that team now for better or worse, welcome. All right. The next, sorry, stay on that slide for just a second. We want the airport to stay open and that's why I'm so assertive about taking every advantage to come in front of you tonight and every other night you're willing to have me. In order to keep the airport open, we need to move towards economic self-sufficiency, to take less from the town's general fund, to ask for less in funding and create more revenue that we can put in. So there's not an incentive to shut down, does that make sense? It's going to take a little while to get there. If there was easy money and low hanging fruit, it's been done already. We need to think strategically, it's going to be five to 10 years before we start seeing things like revenue fees on commercial businesses, land leases that are going to generate revenue. But in the meantime, we're going to talk revenue sustainment and that means selling fuel, bottom line. So we need to keep that fuel farm up and running. Jack said it was put in in 1985. The projected service length of those kind of funding systems is 30 years. We're on borrowed time. It's passing all the safety inspections, the state's happy, the customers are happy. We can't sit on our laurels. So there's plans in place, I need you to know we're working on it. When you're ready for details, we're ready for you.
What's your gross profit margin on the fuel sales?
Jack, I'm going to have to defer to you on that one. Probably with a follow-up.
You got two different types, right?
Yes, we got, so the 100 low lead is for the smaller airplanes, there's almost no margin to markup on that fuel because they just won't tolerate pain. But the jet, we're, we're able to put a significant markup on that. With, but we still within, you know, the surrounding areas and industry standards. So maybe we try to, you know, when we sell the 100 low lead, get maybe five, if we lucky, 10% markup with the jet. What, 60, 70?
We try to hit 80, but it's often 60.
And we can't, we can't call it a profit margin too because of operating expenses that cut into that margin that Jack puts in. But the biggest one by far is Jet A to service those turbine aircraft. So that's a conversation that we're going to want to hear from the community on. Is that the kind of growth we want? The folks that are coming to this town are coming here on those kind of jets. We can continue to serve them and sell the Jet A fuel at that higher margin? Or we can say, that's really not the growth we want, let's temper that, let's meter. Or we can say, that's really not the growth we want. Let's temper that. Let's meter that and do what we can to manage the growth. We don't want to put it down. We don't necessarily want to encourage it. The question is, how do we manage? So we'll, we'll nail down that number for you, Mayor. But I, I would, would you be comfortable saying on average is the wholesale price fluctuates less than two dollars of, of margins?
Yeah.
Yeah. Over wholesale pricing.
Yep.
For, for sure. Balance.
Yes.
So if we're not ready for commercial development on the undeveloped land on the airport now, and we're not for various reasons, mostly infrastructure, mostly lack of demand because we haven't marketed or sought out a business partner for that. What do we do in the meantime to grow revenues? Jack and Chandra have taken a lot of initiative to create momentum towards collecting fees that the airport's already entitled to and making sure we're not leaving money on the table. But what we really need to do with the land we have available is think about emergency response operations like you just saw with the fire and broaden that out, whether it's we're cut off from road access due to floods, fire, just basic infrastructure failure like bridged that needs work. Having open land in a secure environment is a boon to the community. And you don't know you need it until it's too late. So that right there is why I want to keep the airport open more than anything. Even if we never get into the black and generate revenue and start dumping money into the general fund, having that airport to host the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the Department of Defense via the Air National Guard, search and rescue. Think of field hospitals during the pandemic. These are all things that we need to be thinking about and more importantly, planning towards. And this is another place where I really need your help. I'm working with the county through the Transportation Advisory Board and I'm in touch with our county emergency manager. But every time that each one of you have an occasion to talk to those groups, when the airport comes up or if it doesn't come up, you insert yourself gently, please. But let them know that we're ready to partner. We're not asking, we're ready to give. We're giving our time. We're giving our expertise and we want to have a seat at the table, be part of the conversations to plan towards those emergency response operations. What we get out of it when we're integrated into emergency response planning is the funding that comes along with this. If you're integral to the plan, then the funding comes to make sure you can execute the plan. So we'll just fast forward to the next slide and kind of summarize how we all can help on that. These are read aheads. They can be read afters. There's a point paper out there that was attached so you can dig into the details, but I feel like you're hearing me when I say open in the short term for the next five years via emergency response, planning, preparation and operations. Bridge to commercial development where there's going to be businesses that pay us fees for operating on airport property. But none of that matters if it's not in a direction the community wants. So right now I need the support from the BOT to be part of the comp plan process. Specific questions on the comp plan survey process to the community about what they want and don't want out of the airport. Because if I take the board, if I take the airport in a growth direction that's counter to what we're hearing that the town wants, we're going to have to wipe it all out, hit the reset button. I'm willing to do that, but why would I, you know, if, if we have the S opportunity right in front of us to grow and develop in a way that is supportive of the town's goals, right here, this first bullet is the only one that matters. This airport is a tool you all to leverage for the broader community goals. Don't think of it as a stovepipe of aviation, rich folks and business jets. This is a lever for you to achieve the town's broader goals as defined by the comp plan. So I'll leave it right there. I'm looking forward to many more conversations. I'll get as far down in the weeds as you want. I'll convince you that I'm somebody that I can trust and I somewhat know what I'm talking about. But more importantly, I know the limits of my knowledge and I know when I need to reach out and ask for help. And that's why it's so important to build these relationships with the county. Because we need your support and their support when the FAA looks somebody in the eye and says, do you guys want to keep the airport open? It needs to be a resounding yes to keep that federal and state line flowing. That's it, guys. Thanks so much for your time.
Any questions for Dan?
The very last point there, could you elaborate on that? What is the national plan of integrated airport systems?
Right. So the FAA looks at every airport in the United States. And they say, is this something that fits into our plan of how the airports relate to each other? So DIA, obviously Colorado Springs, commercial traffic. And you're going to have reliever airports like Grand Junction, Gunnison, that are maintained to offer alternates for those big aircraft to go to. In order to have those kind of airports not be overwhelmed by general aviation traffic, your business jets and your piston traditional Cessnas that you would think of. Airports like ours integrate into that plan in that way where they can focus their operations on our airport and keep those airports free or for larger jet traffic. So that's how we fit into the FAA's plan. But it's reviewed every five years and that's when they come to local leadership and say, we don't see a reason to change, do you all? And where I'm afraid of losing it is if the land becomes more valuable in someone's eyes for redevelopment outside of aviation purposes, we may blindly give up this emergency asset, this tool that we can use strategically planning out into the future for something like redevelopment right now, you know? And it's, I'm not saying one's right or wrong. I'm not buying or selling. It's just we have to be strategic about that decision. Have the whole picture as best as we can when those kind of decisions are made. And historically, we haven't had these kind of opportunities to talk to each other. The airport's just been off doing its own thing for decades. Is that fair? We got to change it and I'm, I'm here to serve you and the town and the community. So please take advantage. I like working for free and it doesn't make any sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Happy to have you doing that. Okay, now we will have comments from Brian Berger.
I've got a follow up, Dan. That's always exciting. All right. The continuation of the department update work session series. Been a pretty good run so far. Kind of general overview as far as discussion tonight. I do want to get into the organization structure. Twenty twenty-four capital project. Tracking and one concise two slide list. As well as kind of BOT look ahead schedule and how do we kind of go forward? What's the plan moving forward? So started with, this is the official org chart updated September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Official start date. One thing that's been beneficial through this process, I hope you guys see it too, is the idea that we've really been able to talk about the rest of our staff, all those individuals that show up every day and contribute to this town. Historically during the kind of standing every month, department head updates. It was that department head updates. And so this provided an opportunity to talk about, you know, Randy and Chandra and John and everybody in between. So just putting names with titles. I think it goes a long ways to identify those individuals that contribute to just our organization, but the town as a whole. It's very linear. It's very straight. It's very clean. It's great for being the official org chart. But I do think it's important to identify, there is a lot of overlap. There are a lot of overlap conversations. There are a lot of overlap collaborative efforts. This is quick and dirty, taking arrows as much as possible and showing just where, who talks to who. It's not comprehensive. It's not, doesn't catch all the conversations, but we have standing department head meetings every two weeks. That includes all, you know, the department heads meeting to discuss things that affect all of us. There are updates in general. You've got individuals like special events has a lot of overlap with the different organizations. You've got a development review team, which is consists of the planning department and really key individuals from public works as well as our consultants meet weekly on Thursdays to discuss different, not just land use applications, but also as we hopefully see a standard specs and stuff like that. So those individuals are talking on a regular basis. John, HR talks to everybody. You've got, you know, even utility, Billy Clerk, Dave Holtby talking to the water offs, working together to do meter reading during monthly as far as that goes. So you've got a lot of just overlap there. Sometimes I think there's a misconception of being completely silent. Yeah, I mean, so at the end of the day, there's going to be certain things that are silent. You know, there's certain departments that draw interest from a certain personality opposed to another department, but it's not as silent as people think. We are a cohesive organization that has a lot of overlap. Lot of conversations between us. And at the end of the day, you've got, you know, a group of people that signed up to be, to work in the public sector. A lot of individuals probably could make more money in the private sector. But we've all chosen to work in the public sector, be public servants. And public servants is not a terrible word to describe what we do. It can be a thankless job, not to say that there's no thank yous, but there's probably more on the other side than thank yous. And what we do. Which is why I kind of did this discussion. I put that here. I kind of wanted to highlight just the weight of what we do. I mean, there's a lot of decisions that come in these different roles and these different positions that really is a responsibility that I don't think any of us take lightly. I don't think any of us, you know, are in it for any other reason than to help our community with good intentions. I think we mean the best, but I mean, when I talk weight, I mean, police is pretty cut and dry, you know, at the end of the day, they deal with life and death situations. You know, there's those opportunities, you know, when they ask themselves, did I use the right tactics? Were there things that I could have done differently in a certain situation? Will I get sued? I mean, the recent legislation in recent years puts them individually liable. You know, if they are in a situation where they have to cause harm, then did I cause harm to somebody? Not just that individual, but the friends, the families. Are we ready for different crisis situations? Especially police looking individuals looking to them to run towards violence? You know, there's, there's weight to that. But it's not just police. Public Works, for instance, water, I mean, you're providing a life necessity and water to thousands of people. You know, are there, is our system sufficient? Are there appropriate redundancies? If, you know, a chlorine pump goes down, if there's a leak at the wellhead, if there's a water main break, if there's an extended power outage, can we still provide that water to thousands of individuals? Sean highlighted the water department. They answer to CDPA two. And CDPA, CDPA two is, you know, coming down with state requirements, but also are, you know, funneling through federal requirements to basically ensure that we have safe, reliable water. Those individuals are on call twenty-four seven. I've taken that phone before. It's not here, but in my past position. It's a real consideration. It's a real weight that you are responsible for providing that water to individuals. I would wake up in the morning, turn my faucet on. That was the first thing I did. Yep, still got water, still got pressure. It's not as simple as just coming through the water, but that meant the tanks were full. Right? So, you know, there's that side of things. You know, watershed, source water protection district, source water protection district applications. Are we putting the appropriate thought? Are we vetting it? Are we ensuring that that future development doesn't contaminate our water source? You know, if it does, what do we do then? Can it be undone? Who signed off on it? Sean signed off on it. But there's a lot of weight associated with it. You know, roads are there adequately maintained, even as simple as sidewalks and tripping hazards. You know, somebody trips over a sidewalk that's bugged a little bit and you know, freak accident, you know, cracks their head open. I mean, these things happen. Wreck is one that is responsible for programs that are geared towards children, but puts a whole other layer on it. When we're recruiting volunteers and coaches, are we adequately vetting those individuals? If something were to happen, did we do the right thing? Did we put that child in a bad situation? You know, with playgrounds, they're going through designing and building a playground. That thing gets installed. Kid's on the top run, falls off, you know, ends up getting a head injury, lifelighted to Colorado Springs in the ICU. Start asking yourself, did, was it designed right? Was it installed right? Was it inspected right? Is the bedding material appropriate? These are questions that get us, keep us up at night. Planning in its nature impacts twenty, thirty, forty years plus into the future. You make a mistake, Joe makes a mistake, it's there for a hundred years. We'll always be able to say. Did we encroach and inadvertently encroach on somebody's property rights? I mean, Kildoser, anybody familiar with Kildoser, two thousand four? That was a land use decision. That's where it started. It was a land use decision. You know, when you're looking at major subdivisions, do we have adequate infrastructure? Are we accidentally overburdening our system where there's water, traffic, sidewalks, anything like that? Once that entitlement's given, once the infrastructure goes out, it's hard to bring it back in. So ensuring that you're really thinking about all the different aspects. I mean, even drainage, was the drainage designed correctly for a hundred year storm? It doesn't rain a lot around here. But they happen and they're called hundred year storms, not because they happen every hundred years, but because there's a one percent chance every year that it rains that hard. I've seen one and I sit in my, like in my house and I was like, oh, nice, heavy rain. This is beautiful. And then it started raining more and I just on my landscape and I was like, oh, the water's going more. I wanted it to go. Then it started raining more and I'm like, oh, man. The next day you drive around all this new infrastructure that's gone and did it hold up? Or was everybody flooded out, you know, or did it inadvertently flood out the guy downstream? Those are real considerations, real things to think about. You know, even as simple as a notice, was it noticed appropriately? Did everybody get the adequate notice where the referral agencies noticed? You know, even finance. Do we have adequate reserves? Do we? You know, in case of emergency, a bridge failure, do we have money to replace that bridge, you know? Did we fall, are we in violation of the taxpayer bill of rights? Like Philip just violates people's rights? HR function within finance as well as accounts payable, you know, in charge of paying insurance premiums. Was there an inadvertent gap and now we left an employee with hundreds of thousands of dollars of medical debt inadvertently? Clerk, you know, there's always that idea of, you know, especially more now than ever as far as do we, do we have the appropriate process and mechanisms in place to prevent election fraud? The idea of the record keeper of the municipality, ensuring that we have adequate record documentation of how decisions were made, why they were made. Agreements on file. You know, a development comes through and falls through. Do we have an executed agreement? This is, this is what they're going to do and they're, you know, in default of the agreement that they signed. Is it easy to find? Is it something that we have on? There's weight to all of it. Airport, you know, they touched on safety. Flying is dangerous, especially them little planes. That, you know, Dan doesn't even fly the little planes. He says he doesn't like them. But all these carry weight. It is something I used to carry by myself in my past position. Now I get to share it. And it goes a long way. And I think, you know, I hope the department heads can see that they can share it with me. And I will take it if they need me to. But at the end of the day, we all, meanwhile, we all are dedicated. We show up. So I think it's important to highlight just to have that conversation, point that out. So that's that part. Then you get into the fun stuff. There is gratifying stuff to our jobs. And that really comes with the capital projects. Capital projects, this is a gratifying component of our jobs. We get to see tangible outcomes that are benefits to our community. And we get to take these things through the process and say, yeah, I helped build that escape park. I helped, you know, we planted that tree in twenty seventeen. Same rate and destroy it. So this is snapshot of where we're at as far as twenty twenty-four projects. As far as twenty twenty four projects, I think, I don't think we had the opportunity to see them all on a concise list with kind of where we're at. You can see which ones are done. Uh, there's status on the right side to identify. Yeah, there are some that are intentional to be fall. There's some that are in process uh, to be completed at a fall. Uh, there's some that are kind of on the pole. Uh, street paving is pretty darn close to being done. It's at least, I know the road by the airports has got done. Um, it's been kind of a concise list there, but these are, we do enjoy this. Um, and we'd take a long time to go through budget to identify these, identifying those priorities. Um, then we get into the board and look ahead schedule. Uh, and kind of pose the question with, out of this exercise of the department head updates, one thing that did more work sessions. Um, so I have the eight listed here. I guess the kind of the question first off is how do you like this process? Do, how do we want to structure going through forward? Do we want to go back to every department heads here every month and provides kind of the boilerplate update at the end of each meeting? Uh, granted, when we get into budget season, that'll kind of create its own schedule in itself. Um, thoughts?
How's it been going?
As Oh, no, it's just, I appreciate how it's been working out thus far. I think it's been pretty smooth. We're able to see ahead and there's always a little flexibility if we let you guys know, uh, with enough time, but I, I, I appreciate the, the changes that have been made and it's been working well personally.
Yeah, completely. Second one, Janice said, uh, I really, I like the format. I feel like it, as the newbie on the board, it gives a little bit more in-depth conversation versus a staff report in the middle of the meeting.
Right.
And I really do like the work sessions and and it allows us to, to look ahead to those work sessions that we do all want to learn more about.
Yep.
And because of course, now that we've gone through all departments.
Yep.
It's like, well, what are we gonna talk about next time?
Exactly.
We got all these things, so I really like the new format.
All right, we have a work sessions that were identified. I was hoping maybe you could rank them once you're ready. And then we can create averages. Not getting as fancy as Joel on it, but we're big straight averages to identify which ones we can talk about next time. And then we can integrate kind of department heads as we go.
This is hard.
Can I do more than one, one? Can I do one point one and one point two?
Yeah.
Which one's the highest priority, one or eight?
One is highest.
Thank you for asking. What's up?
I don't even remember.
This is going forward. These are ones that we haven't talked.
Which ones do you want to talk about first or most?
Yeah, my house.
Can you do lower than eight? Yeah. Rank one, recommend one. The other thing, when you guys are doing that, uh, there might be some consideration, one thing we talked about at the staff level. Uh, during kind of our staff meeting was potentially, uh, we don't have to meet and stay here. Like we can do destination work sessions.
Oh.
And there's some consideration of that, like the airport, we'll have the intergovernmental meeting there, which would be a good opportunity, but come going out there and actually see the ins and outs. Uh, that kind of concept. Um, with that said, let's see, seven plus max, then we could probably take the truck bus, drive around.
Perfect.
Yeah, like a field trip tour.
Um, if we were gonna be at the airport, could we start earlier? You know, and get there and
Oh, it's gonna have time to drive back here.
Let them show us around.
Yeah, we could do something like that. Yep. Well, number three is the nice.
I just hearing so much talk about world number three. Oh, really? Should we just pass him back?
Pass him back. Yeah, I don't know. They're all kind of same. Can I just do a bunch of ones?
Why did it? Yeah, they're all. We're already ready.
Immediate results.
So sad, it's one nice result. Wish you changed all, Devon.
You can't do that.
Make them up. Let's leave it out. Below, somebody's the best, no? Yep.
You don't have to read it from.
All right. All right, water as portfolio.
Water. It's a winner.
We're see management discussions. We got rich here this evening, uh, hopefully, so that'll help kind of kick that off. Water conservation plan update discussion, that'll be a good one. That's you guys. Texans Finance, Philip, Field Drive Process, Christian Air Housing, further discussion on turf and grass. Boom, seven fifteen here, six fifty-nine. You do, uh, Excel lessons.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. We're in Monte Carlo, somebody else. Is it? Are you ready for a break? Got additional questions? I guess. Throw it out there.
Thank you.
So if those are on the end, are you just not gonna do?
It's possible.
Or, or it's possible now. We'll bring them back up at some point. All right.
Ready? Okay, is the recording on?
We'll run into it.
Hmm, wow.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, good. Uh, good evening. Uh, welcome to the meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Unabused Colorado. Um, today's date is July ninth, two thousand twenty-four. It's seven P M. Um, please silence your cell phones if you have with you. Um, and Paul, would you do a roll call, please?
How are you, Kate?
Here, trustee hike.
Here.
Trustee the Cretezy.
Here.
Trustee Rice.
Here.
Trustee Rosenauer.
Here.
Trustee Row.
Yeah.
And trustee Swisher.
Here.
Great.
Thank you. Um, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustees, you have before you an agenda, a proposed agenda for tonight. Um, are there any changes that you feel should be made in, in the agenda? And if there are none, I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
I move we adopt the agenda as written.
A second.
So we have Bryce and Hike. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda is adopted. Passes. Um, and then we have the consent agenda. Is there anything in the consent agenda that you would like to have further discussion about? If not, I'd like an, a motion to accept the consent agenda as published.
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda as published.
Give her a second. So we have the Cretezy and Swisher. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So the motion passes and the agenda is adopted. Now we'll go to public comment. Um, we have a couple of people who have signed in on the clipboard here. Um, Paul Andrews is one of the people who has signed up. Um, Paul, would you be willing to go first? Yeah. Um, and please give us your, your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm good evening. My name is Paul Andrews. I'm at two seven nine nine nine, county road three oh one. And I am a little intrigued about the list that you just pulled down that, Andrews, I walked in, I think I, I missed something, but um, I wanted to just make a few public comments about redevelopment zones and TIF financing, which I think were at the bottom of your list, not on the top of your list. Um, and this was a big, um, thing that I was involved in a year ago, I think is incredibly important to the town. It's something that will enable in, um, a lot of people's belief a thoughtful redevelopment of Highway twenty-four, um, which is gonna happen eventually over time. Uh, all real estate is ultimately driven by capital and the cost of capital. And what TIF financing does is it enables local businesses, local operators, local building owners and development access to more affordable capital to develop, um, places for local businesses. Um, if we don't do this and put this in place, the only other people with the capital to develop businesses along the highway are gonna be national tenants and national businesses. So by advancing this in the next year, it gives us, in my opinion, the ability to set up the next one of I can for success out on the highway. If we don't do that, it'd be McDonald's. It's an opportunity for a local operator such as Crave to have access to a building and be put in place there instead of T G I Fridays. Similarly, the next roastery versus Starbucks. Uh, a food hall for local food trucks to graduate into instead of a bunch of blind national tenants. Um, the structure is well proven, um, and it provides, um, the opportunity for us to provide entrepreneurial opportunities for local businesses to have the opportunity to be in places like that, which I think is more in keeping with the entrepreneurial spirit of this town and leads to a better town with businesses owned and operated by local entrepreneurs and business owners as opposed to owned by large national tenants who will just take those profits back to Chicago and New York or wherever they come from. So, um, I think I told where I was on the priority list, so maybe I'm a little late, but, um, I implore the staff to find the money to get that consultant going this year and for the board to prioritize that initiative this year. I understand with the comp plan going on, it's probably too soon to enact it. But if at the end of the comp plan process, people say they'd rather have local owned and operated businesses, given the opportunity to flourish along the highway instead of a bunch of national tenants coming in place by cutting the consultant leaps and starting that groundwork over the next year. As we come out of the comp plan, we may be in a, a place to move forward with that opportunity with affordable capital in place for local businesses and, uh, operators to do that as opposed to a bunch of national tenants. I missed the original work plan, but that's the reality of, of capital aplian. We have an opportunity.
I'd like to, I'd like to break with tradition. Typically, we don't respond to public comment, but, um, uh, the list that Brian was just, um, having us, um, choose among the different categories. That's for going forward.
Yep.
We did a recent work session on TIF, TIF financing. Um, and, and we are definitely very interested in it.
Awesome.
Yeah, so it's more likely that it will be a business item than a work session.
Perfect.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. And I would have spoken to you two guys first, but I've been doing other stuff. I'm sorry to jump ahead and do this.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And then, uh, we have Jeff Olinger. Who is on our water advisory board. And again, breaking with tradition, um, Joel Benson may have some additions to what Jeff's presented us.
Yeah, Jeff and I communicated before, um, before the meeting, he's gonna be out of the country for a few months. Um, so he in particular wanted to, um, there's this item on the agenda which is gonna be continued because, uh, some, some process redos that we had to do, and that's the rezoning of Barnwood. And Jeff's not gonna be in country and he, he's, we don't have the public comment portion later, so, um, anyway, he wants you guys to hear it. And so I'm gonna take notes and that'll be included in public comment for planning zoning commission and then uh, trustees later.
Here, here, I have to recuse myself from, from the conversation. We're going to do public comment now. So is that okay if I stop now?
Oh, good.
So just, um, so I'm gonna recuse myself from the public comic and also the business item. Um, due to appearances with relation to campaign, campaign contributions. So, um, just text me.
Sure.
Okay.
Anyway, so since Jeb, uh, is gonna be out of country and he's again, this was a, a scheduling issue that we're pre restarting and so if other people are
Is this a public hearing or is this a public?
No. This is, um, Jeff is public commenting and, um, he's also invited to submit a letter or something like that. So this is just public comment related to that in, in the, the public hearing is later, although there's no he's just public comment in three minutes, just letting the trustees know why he's speaking.
Please go ahead, Jeff. Please give your name and
These are the, there's two other gentlemen here. We're here to also comment with regard to the rezoning. Would like to just point that out to you. Okay?
Um, Jeff.
Parker.
Dropped off. He dropped off. Just gonna see if there's a any other issue with that. But again, the, so the, the public comment, the public hearing for, um, the agenda item, public hearing for the rezoning of one of five Barnwood. We are, have to continue that. It was already agendized, but we have to start, basically start the process over because of some notification issues. And so it's going to the planning zoning commission. Um, uh, seventeenth of July and the process is beginning. It was on the agenda. It was already noticed and therefore we're having, um, the hearing later. And Jeff is just here to public comment, so take it how you will. It's, um, he's invited to write a letter for the public comment and as those written comments can be part of the public process, but, um, But he's really here for the hearing, but there's not a really a hearing. It's not a public comment portion of that later. And so the people here to comment later will not have a chance to comment later. Because you're not going to open the hearing because, excuse me, you're not going to open the public comment portion because it's got to be continued.
That's part of the hearing, right?
Yeah.
Could they though sign up to speak now as part of the comment?
It's part of the public comment for, for anybody to speak up to three minutes as, as per the.
So I'd like to give you that opportunity if you would like to speak. But you need to sign in on the clipboard. And the pen has gotten off of there somewhere.
Can we just have a public hearing and the continuance factor?
We'll open the public hearing. And, but we, we can't do public comment portion of it because it wasn't properly notified. And so we have to start over with that process.
Jeff, please go ahead.
Okay, well, good evening to everyone, mayor, trustees, staff. My name is Jeff Ollinger, 220 Weathervein Lane, Buena Vista. And I am not really, I'm not representing the water advisory board at all. I'm here as a resident at that location. When it comes to this rezoning, it harkens me back to when I was a city county planner for quite a few years of my early career in Grand Junction in Mesa County. And when I think back to those days, I also was a qualified expert witness in planning matters. And I taught college level technical college, college level planning and zoning courses. But regardless of whether it was then or now, the principles are still the same. The principle that an industrial land use zone would go directly abutting up against a residential zone is just not in keeping with any principle of planning, whether it's Planning 101 or the most advanced phases of planning. Basically saying that the surrounding land uses, of which we have on the south side, the Buena Vista Police Department. On the east side, we have a Class A number one Buffalo Peak Center Professional Business Park. Very well done, nicely operated professional business park. And then on the north side of the property, of the property being rezoned, we have the farm, which is R3, you know, which the town zoned at one time. And the town owns the zoning for zoning that is R3. And then of course, across the street is the Buena Vista Family Practice Clinic, the clinic that we all own because we've all been paying into the hospital district and we're their neighbors. And then it's, it's something that we own collectively. So basically, the surrounding land uses and the proposed rezone were just a complete mismatch. It was never intended again for industrial to butt up against residential. You know, as I think back in my planning days, the question that is before you with the rezoning is this, is should these land uses, the land uses that are listed in this categorical zone be allowed at this location as related to the surrounding land uses? Now, when we go to the industrial permitted uses in this particular zone, I just want to mention one, that is heavy manufacturing. Now, if you go and do a simple search online, the first thing I came to was Law Insider. Heavy manufacturing is defined as manufacturing of products, the process of which generates fumes, gases, smokes, vapors, vibrations, noise or glare or similar nuisance factors which have a high probability of occurring and which may cause adverse effects to the users of, users of adjacent land. Very straightforward. It's not an extreme definition. It seems to fit perfectly for what is it? It is intended as heavy manufacturing.
Right, three minutes, Jeff.
Yes.
You're out here three minutes, just a heads up. You're out here three minutes.
Okay. Let me just conclude with that, that, you know, the overall list of permitted uses that would be advanced into the heavyweight industrial zone from the current zoning are very inappropriate for the surrounding land uses. And it's important that the town leaders own the surrounding land uses, including the residential R3 and the other land uses. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Joel, do you have anything you can say now or later?
Only that, I mean, you all haven't seen any, any materials on this at all. So it's just a public comment.
Okay, all right, great. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak at public comment? Sign in on that.
I did. Thank you for the opportunity to do so.
Welcome. So you, you have three minutes to speak and we'd like for you to start with your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name's Frederick Battalia. My address is 29960, County Road 354. In addition, I'm a business owner at the Buffalo Peak Center, located adjacent to the property that is a subject of the petition for rezoning, which I know you don't have materials for tonight and I understand the process and, and why, why there's a redo. I just have a few comments. I certainly would like to echo what has already been said. The largest concern is that as a business owner, expectations are created by commitments and commitments in this case is a zone district. And values, business experiences, property values, exchanges, all of which are dependent on having something that you can count on. And so there is a huge difference in this case between highway commercial, the current zone district and an industrial, an L1, I would assume. There are multiple differences that could cause significant negative impacts for adjacent properties, not just residential properties, but business properties like mine. Most notably, it is the same thing, is the fact that the manufacturing could be light, medium or heavy. And of course, my concern, what this isn't about, I should say, this isn't about the good faith of the current owners of 105 Barnwood. It isn't, it isn't that at all. I take them at face value and I'm quite confident, though I don't know them personally, that they are upstanding members of the business community and perhaps residential here as well. That's not the issue. The issue is that the potential future impacts that, that I could experience as a result of a vastly expansive use category like heavy manufacturing. And that would have a monumental impact on the value of my business and other businesses. But that's probably my primary point. And I would also say that with regard to the petitioner, and I realize you're in the dark on this, but as my final comment, I would like to point out that the live work arrangement that they are seeking has been solidified by a special use permit that they currently operate under in order to have two RVs on a property where that normally wouldn't be the case. And so they are meeting that need that they have. And I feel that a special use permit is an appropriate use of that permit because it gives a specific owner for a specific duration, a specific use. And that's the key. And that's what they want. Here you have an individual property owner with a specific need and you have a special use permit that needs it. A categorical change to a zone district is simply just too impactful in a negative way to the surrounding businesses. So those are my comments. I want to thank the board for the time and opportunity and for all that you do for our great community. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have a fourth person signed up now, Tom Murphy.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time.
Please give your name and address for the record.
I'm Murphy, P.O. Box 910, Buena Vista. I'm also an owner of one of the units over at the Buffalo Peaks Center there. And without wasting all your time and being redundant and what everybody else has said, which has been stated very well and clearly, that would be the crux of the issue with myself. And that is, we have no problem with the Eckstines and what they've been doing and how they've been running their business. And it has been a special use permit for that. The biggest problem that I have, should this zoning change, is that we open Pandora's box and we potentially let all kinds of other uses, should the Eckstein sell it, you know, or things along that lines. And that is my biggest thing about protecting our property and our investment over there, which has been in this town as well. And would be my main concern along with Jeff's and all that. But, and I don't want to take any more of your time because I know you've been very busy. But that's, that's the biggest thing. They've done a wonderful job. We don't have a problem with them. But we're just afraid that you're going to swing the doors wide open. And then once, once the animals are out of the barn, we have no control over what's going on with the property down the line. You know, should they sell it and somebody else comes in. And then it doesn't necessarily have to go through any processes to make this happen if my understanding is correct. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. Do we have Rich here yet?
No, I just received a message from asking if I could talk. I don't know if you got hung up or something, then I can give him a call if I want to kind of progress to the next ones.
Okay. The next one is a public hearing, which is a rezoning application for Lenny Eckstein of Deer Hammer Distillery to rezone 105 Barnwood Drive from highway commercial to light industrial. And I would like to open the public hearing. And now I would like to hear from our staff. Joel Benson will address.
Yeah, thank you.
Here.
And, and I'll reiterate, reiterate what we said earlier because it is part of this public hearing. The, over the course of notification and fulfilling those requirements, there were a couple errors made in which is notices. And so we felt it best to go back to Planning and Zoning Commission and have a new hearing because some, some of the public were not properly notified. And so, you know, that's critical to have. So, so with that, we have reposted a hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 17th. And that would be fair for that meeting if there are comments from the public that should be included within the public record. That would be a time either write it or come and speak there so that it can be included within the public record through the public comment portion. Any written submitted will be included also as, as feedback to, in the packet, to both Planning and Zoning Commission and then Board of Trustees. So, so unfortunately, we are in the position to really start the process up over with Planning and Zoning Commission. This was already agendized and noticed this meeting. So we're calling this public hearing and we're recommending the continuance. And we would recommend continuing it to August the 13th. And prior to that, we'll have, you know, Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, recommendation and be able to properly present all the necessary materials to the Board of Trustees.
Okay, so is there a motion from the trustees, from a trustee to continue the public hearing until August 13th, 2024? So moved.
I'll second.
Here we have Ross and Row. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the public hearing for the Board of Trustees is continued to August 13th. It will be preceded by a meeting of planning and zoning, right? Not that date, but earlier.
Correct. And we'll send out mailers for the, mailers are already sent out for July 17th. And we'll send out mailers for August 13th as well to, to neighbors and.
That's okay. I'd like to close the public hearing then.
Yes, will, will the comments made by myself and my neighbors here be provided in the packets to the Planning Commission?
I'll let you submit them in writing.
Yeah, it's a carryover. What, what was put in here is not going to be carried forward to the planning and zoning. We have to show up again, is what you're saying.
Yeah, or, or you send an email. Just send, send a little email to me and we can talk about that. Is that correct, Jeff Parker?
Yes, can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Sorry, I had an issue before. Yeah, that's correct because it has to be provided in the public hearing. And this is just, the comments that were made were just made during the public comment period. So you can either come to the meeting and submit and say it again or you can submit a written, your written comments and Joel can put them in the packet.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Okay. Not sure we're ready for her to come back. She affected by the next one?
As a legislative matter, no.
Thank you. Okay. Licretzi is rejoining the meeting now at 7:28. The next item is a public hearing with regard to changes to temporary seasonal camping. And this has to do with amending certain parts of the UDC. But it has been found that there is more information that we'd like to get from other departments and the Planning and Zoning Commission in time for us to be able to review this before we have the public hearing. So I'd like to open the hearing. And again, Joel.
Yeah, thank you. This is something that, it's a topic that was started in April or so, 2023, allowing, expanding the camping and, and working with, or before that, they're working with the Planning and Zoning Commission last spring. They provided input on some changes to camping in general, which exists currently in the I-1 Zone District, Land District Zone District. And there was a desire to expand that to highway commercial. So we've been working on that. We had a hearing at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And we're hoping to be in a position where we could visit the ordinance this meeting, but it's not ready yet. So we continue the Planning and Zoning hearing also till July 17th. And July the 23rd, we recommend that we continue the hearing until, for the Board of Trustees until July 23rd. And that'll give us just that time to button some things up. So it's a good presentation for y'all. Better thought out policy. So that's, it is appropriate though to open the public comment portion and close it if, you know, and there's nothing for people to review at this point, but someone might, might be online or something just to comment about it and then look for a continuation.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public comment portion of the hearing. Brian, would you see if there's anyone on, on Zoom, please?
Nobody has their hammer in this.
There's no one showing up on Zoom. Is there anyone here physically present who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And then I'd like for someone to make a motion to, you could do various things, but one thing you could do is to continue the public hearing for the ordinance amending sections 3.3, 1.4 and 3.3, 2.4C of the United, of the Unified Development Code related to temporary seasonal camping to modify or. to modify requirements for temporary seasonal camping and expand the use into the highway commercial zone district. And the hearing would be continued to July 23rd, 2024. Is there anyone who would like to make that motion? So we have Swisher and Rosnor. All in favor? Is anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you.
I'd like to close the hearing, the public hearing. Okay, uh, we are moving on now to item C, uh, which is the Tribeview Annexation Completeness Review. And the question here will be, should the board of trustees approve the adoption of resolution number 56, series 2024 entitled "A Resolution Accepting the Petition for Annexation and Establishing August 13th, 2024" as the date of public hearing on the requested annexation of a parcel of unincorporated territory located in Chaffee County. Tribeview Annexation. Is this one you tuned, Joel?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board. Um, so as you know, Tribeview Metropolitan District, uh, petition to annex into town, we had that, um, communique from Paula, Town Clerk, last meeting. And the next step in the, um, statutory process is to find substantial compliance, meaning there's a, essentially a legal review of all the materials submitted with the petition. And there's a long list of things, um, that need to be contained within the petition, and so Catherine Sellers and Jeff Parker, our town attorneys, went through everything and, um, Jeff's here, but there's no, um. No concerns? From it, so the recommendation, uh, would be that yes, it is substantial compliance. And it's a, it's one of those things, it's like, if, if all of the boxes are checked, you really need to find substantial compliance. And the second part of that is to set a hearing date, and that hearing date must be, um, more than 30 days from now and less than 60 days from now, and that hearing date, um, during that hearing, that's our public hearing when we visit, the, the materials within that annexation. Tribeview, recall, this is that Chicago Ranch just south of the rodeo. So, um, so the petition was filed. Our legal team and, and staff believe that there is substantial compliance. And so the step would be to, um, make, you know, find substantial compliance and set the hearing date. So, and then we'll take the next steps for annexation after that notification and, um, setting a hearing, doing zoning, et cetera, et cetera. And that, the process is outlined in the, in the snap packet as well. Jeff, is that, um, anything additional there?
Yeah, no, you, you covered it, Joel. I mean, they'll, just so you know, this is just whether or not the petition itself is substantial compliance with the requirements of an annexation petition. After you find that the hearing set, then you have a hearing to determine whether the property is actually eligible for annexation, and there's a number of requirements that the property must meet to be eligible. If you determine that it's eligible, you don't have to annex it, it's a voluntary decision, and then, you know, the next decision is whether you actually want to annex it or not, so. This decision you're making tonight doesn't bind you to do anything other than you have to have your hearing and decide whether or not you want to annex the property, assuming you find it to be eligible. So there's a few steps to go through, annexation's got one of these, is one of these processes where you basically have to check a bunch of boxes to get through the process to make a decision, so. Yeah, and, and as a note, you know, Joel said, the petition itself, we've determined that it is substantial compliance with the legal requirements, and therefore, you, you, you should be determining that, uh, you need to set a hearing. We happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there questions for Jeff? Or for Joel? So, um, the choices here now are to either approve resolution number 56 as presented, or amend the draft resolution number 56 if you believe that the petition does not substantially comply with the Colorado revised statute, section 31 dash 12 dash 107, one, or you could, um, make a motion to deny resolution number 56.
Make a resolution, uh, to approve Town of Univista resolution number 56, series 2024.
Okay. So we have McCrute and Rice. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did talk to Rich Atkins, uh, he had some medical issues, uh, come up over the weekend that resulted in a couple trips to the emergency room.
So he was unable to make it today as far as he is out doing better, but, uh, did apologize profusely and will reschedule to a later date for an update from him.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, uh, we are now at the point of trustee staff interaction. And, um, Devin, how about, would you like to start?
Normally, I think I will be here in, in next meeting, uh, my mom is visiting, Jeff.
You want to bring up, um, and just notice more over the holiday weekend is on through six with the bike lanes, um, especially because now there's a lot more e-bikes, they're way faster, but, um, folks will use, you know, they'll go, I guess on the bike, they'll go, uh, uh, against traffic, right? So when you're trying to turn out there, they don't follow the, essentially, not everybody follows the rules of the road in terms of cycling, and I was wondering if they're, I know, we could have a sign or paint now the little doodles of the symbols of, hey, that like, you know, cyclists go this way, hikers go this way, not hikers, I guess walkers. Just because it seems like it's just waiting to happen that somebody's going to pull out from side road and somebody's going to be coming the wrong way, and the car's not going to be paying attention and could potentially hit the cyclist. Just, you know, anyhow, I don't know if anybody else notices that, but.
You're talking about 306 specifically?
Yeah, but just because I see it a lot more there, because I'm, that's where I'm coming going, but I know there's cycling lanes throughout town, I just kind of thought, you know, how can we better educate cyclists, like, hey, and there's a bike lane on both sides of the road there. And so cyclists should be with traffic, obviously pedestrians go against traffic, but, you know, um, my husband actually saw somebody the other day, uh, pulling out, and it was an e-bike, and they were going the wrong way, and it was just, he was like ripping his steering wheel as he watched this other car pull out right in front of him, because it seemed like the car didn't see him. But they weren't looking for somebody coming in that direction, because technically the bike should have been on the other side of the road going, you know, going with traffic. So again, it just may be education, but maybe some signage, just something to think about, but as we get more, um, traffic in town, especially during summer months, it's just, I don't want to see anybody get hit.
That's something that distinguishes it from like Rodeo Road or Arizona Street, where you're supposed to be going both directions on one bike lane. Those seem really hazardous to me.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, you're not expecting a bike to be coming from the wrong direction.
I will say, I was riding with Noah, oh, intentionally down the wrong side of the road, the bike lanes in front of the in front of the farm this weekend, because there's no bike lane on the other side of the road. And like not being able to see or know if cars could understand that I was there, maybe wanted to see them. So I think we have like a bike lane issue in general, and I would assume that if bikers are doing that, some of it is lack of education, but some of it is also just fear and safety, you know what I mean? In, in terms of my own experience of biking on 306, so it's probably worth a larger conversation in general about like having an increase in biking on roads where I think drivers are not educated in terms of how to think about bikers too.
Fair.
I was, I was on Arizona biking with traffic because of the big bike lanes over here, and I'm with you, like, I somebody drove by and screamed at me to get in the bike lane.
You were running?
I was riding.
Yeah.
I was biking.
Oh, you were.
Yeah, yeah, I was like, oh, yeah, I guess that's, that lane's big enough as designed for two-way bike traffic.
I didn't know it was two-way though.
But the lady didn't she?
There's only one lane.
Yeah, right.
I guess that's where like 306, there is two, uh, yeah, there are spots.
306 is clear.
Yeah.
There's a bike lane on each side, you should be going the direction of traffic.
They should be, but they don't always, and that's where I'm like, but you're right, when there's one lane dedicated to both, then yes, you just do have to, I didn't know it was dedicated to both.
I wonder if we could get the county's attention in terms of, um, of sweeping those bike lanes too, because there's an awful lot of gravel on them.
Bike lane in town is really rough.
Yeah.
Bike everywhere year round, and even on, and it has that chip seal that is super hard to ride a bike on if you have like a road bike. So, you know, as a person that runs bike year round in this town, you know, it's definitely survival of the fittest. You know, if people can't figure out how to ride a bike in this town and they get hit by a car, I feel like that's kind of their fault, but.
You know, like even when I was pregnant with my first baby, I was more pregnant than this, and I was riding next to the high school along the road with traffic because the bike lane is so difficult to ride on in a road bike, and a guy literally tried to hit me with this truck and like screamed at me to like get on the bike lane. I've been looking for his car ever since. But I would ride on the bike lane if I could on my road bike, it's so rough.
So is there somebody that we should, um, be addressing this to, like the Trails Advisory Board, or, you know, the, um, Public Works?
I just think is, is, because I think we want to be more friendly for multimodal, right? It makes more sense. And so I'm just like, well, how to encourage more people to be doing that, I want to make sure they feel safe too at the same time, and, you know, but anyhow, that was my.
And also having our bike lanes go to the supermarket would probably be a nice idea too.
Well, just continue as, you know, like it starts down on Arizona.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's probably SADA issue is the bike lanes just in before city market.
Yeah.
Scariest sidewalk of all time.
And there's no sidewalk, you know.
Yeah. Thank you, Gina.
Sure.
Obviously a hot topic.
I was like, Sean's gonna be like, darn it.
It's good to hear, I mean, it's I think when those bike lanes, especially the simple bike lanes were, were installed, it was a little sweeter, there's less people using them, and less people driving as well, so it might be kind of
Kick up the entire lane, then you don't have to worry about it.
Cindy, you have any comments? On trustee staff interaction, anything.
Okay. Fireworks, this was the last year that the American Legion was going to do the fireworks because of the age of the American Legion.
They sent a good letter about that. We can skip you for a minute.
We had a great beautification board meeting, and if you guys have any brainstorming ideas, let us know. Really bad. Super good, 4th of July.
Okay. Makeup?
Fourth of July parade was very cute, thank you for those who facilitated that. My planned season action is now scheduled for September 16th, that week, so I imagine my last board meeting, if not earlier, will be the September 10th one that's listed on the upcoming. And then we still need to talk about a leave of absence from the board for a minute, and then probably a return via Zoom for a while. So I need to work that out, but open to thoughts. And I need to talk to Brian and Mayor about it. Yeah, getting close. That's all.
Good. Let's see, I'll, I'll go ahead and finish out the trustees, um. I got, I got a call from a different geothermal person. Somebody that I've spoken with before, uh, but different from the Icelandic power company people. So, you know, I would just say that, you know, there are no decisions being made, um, we as a town, um, it's not, it's not apt to really affect us particularly much in terms of permitting or anything, but, um, I just think people should be aware that there are a couple of competing proposals starting to form, and, um, you know, it just seems like it is apt to become, you know, a reality at some point. Jack, you have any comments?
I'd just like to thank everybody for letting us present, uh, the board or the airport, um, and more than welcome, come on out, visit the airport anytime, and, uh, what Brian mentioned, if the next time we do this is an actual site visit, we'd love to host everybody and come on out. I'd even have some donuts.
Depending what time you come out.
Yeah, definitely in the daylight so you can see everything.
Yeah, good.
And we can help with transportation on that too, if it comes to that, cars and whatnot.
I'd just like to thank you all for your time, I really appreciate you listening, and I welcome answering any questions at any time about the airport or anything else. Just getting to know each other.
Great. Paula?
I have nothing.
Okay, um, Joel?
I have a few updates. There's some progress on the alluvial storage potential down at Johnson Village, so, um, potentially the parties involved potentially having a contract at least drafted, and so hoping to piggyback on that.
So this will be water storage?
Water storage. We'll see how that all comes to play, there's also progress for that Cottonwood Lake Dam rebuild project, it's been happening for many years, and, uh, so there's some good project on that, uh, progress on that. The first step, stage one of the Bray Allen Water Court has progressed into Water Court. With, we filed, uh, we have to do a location correction, but that's in process at least. We have a meeting with Public Utilities Commission on Thursday, um, specifically to talk about that steel drive connection, so, um, after Thursday, we should know. Maybe yay or nay. And some other things we'll talk about, and, uh, we also have a meeting, the next step with CPW, um, I can fill you all in if you don't know what I'm talking about, but it has implications for land and maybe transportation and water and things like that too, so that kind of ongoing discussion with CPW is continuing on Friday.
That's right.
Yeah, busy week.
Importantly, I should say.
Yeah.
That's all.
Sean?
Yeah, just, just thanks for, um, um, the just went through, so I thought Annie would, Rex, she's our events coordinator, I thought she did a great job. First go around with 4th of July, events, things like that, car show. Yeah, and everybody else, like voice management, big time. You know, Saturday, demands, things like that, but, but yeah.
Right, yeah, same to go.
And I made a modification, I stuck that, uh, voluntary water restriction flyer at the end of my staff report, I made a a few subtle changes and mostly watering days. Um, we'll get that, you know. You know, where we can all kind of see it more consumable on the paper and things like that. We're kind of in place right now, and so we've had some long days. It's, uh, yeah, we're feeling a little bit, but.
Can I add one more thing before we move to Brian? Sidney Cavell, our longstanding water. Cindy Cavell, our longstanding water attorney is retiring. And she's been threatening for five years or so. Give Marshawn and Andrea Benson, no relation, is the kind of our new water people. Andrea's been working with us for a number of years. And give also for quite a few years. So they are, I think we're doing the official handoff tomorrow.
Wow.
Wow.
So.
She's done a great job.
Yeah. Yeah, she's been here since eighty seventy eighties.
Really?
Job stuff. Thanks, mayor.
Brian?
Go back to Cindy.
Cindy, are you?
I think I'm back together. I apologize.
That's all right.
So the fireworks thing. I think it is beneficial to the town to have a lot of fireworks display. I don't know if. Who would take it on if the town didn't. But if it's something that the fourth of July brings in a lot of tourists. If it's something the town wanted to do. In our budget, we have given the American Legion four thousand dollars as a donation. They spend a lot more than four thousand dollars. So if that's something that the town wanted to pursue or continue. We would have to put it in budget. And then I had a question for Joel, not Joel, for Sean on the IV leak water loss. Was down significantly. Did they find a major leak out there or?
No, it, it's proportionate to the.
Amount of water used?
I mean, I, you know, I think what we, we saw something maybe last month that we keyed on something. But I think it's just the outside demand is, is peak, so.
I just wondered if we finally got a major breakthrough and it wasn't in your report. Yeah. Okay, thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Yeah, we certainly appreciate the American Legion having done the fireworks display for, you know, for so many years. And we are definitely looking seriously at what else can be done.
And not just anybody could set them off. I mean, there's special training and you have to be certified to be able to. Just a good thing.
Yeah.
I've never seen one.
They're pretty amazing, but they're. What the drones.
But the dogs are.
I know fireworks.
Like the wildlife.
The dogs are happy.
Yeah, so along the fireworks line. I did inquire with them to get kind of an average cost, average annual cost, how much they spent on it. They're, the American Legion, extremely nice. Relayed what equipment they have, what company they typically go through, the, did relay that they're willing to donate the equipment. As far as water tubes and electronics and. Electric Jesus, stuff like that. Still got some baseline information to help start the conversations. We did contribute forty five hundred this last year. I think there's some conversations we had with some other local agencies. That all pursue that, knowing the average cost that they spent, we'll definitely include that as kind of a starter of our list when we go through budget. So. There's that CHA starting to get their feedback under hopefully a little bit. They got the chair position backfilled. Transition committee, which I'm on, we're going through the process of identifying an interim director for. CHA, we did get five applicants. Again, four of them, we'll probably call for interviews early next week with the intention of kind of moving pretty quick to get somebody on board there. Also going through kind of the intergovernmental agreements, the founding I G A. There's some things to clean up there, but the funding I G A for CHA. The funding expires December twenty twenty four. So as we work into budget season, we need to get that finalized. So we're working with admins on that side of things. Think that's about all I've got for now.
Great. Okay, anybody that I left out? Lady, any comments back there?
It's still Christmas in July. Our goal is thirty thousand dollars and we've only made like three thousand.
Nonprofit organization. They use it for payroll, is that right?
They use it to pay me.
Okay, the next item that we have is an executive session. This is an executive session to hold a conference with the town's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions. Pursuant to Colorado revised statutes, section twenty four dash six dash four oh two. For the concerning the development of the school maintenance building. So. I'd like to have somebody make a motion that we go into executive session. And then we will have a vote to see if the trustees want to do that.
I move to enter into executive session.
Okay, so we have Rosner and. And all in favor of holding an executive session? Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. We can take a five minute break if you want. Let's do it.